I would like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission to order, which the meeting has been duly posted. And at this time, I'd like to call upon Mr. Souches to deliver our invocation.
Good day, Father. We come to you today asking for your blessing and support as we start this meeting to help us to have a good discussion. Allow us to work in group and get together for the community, which in this name and your name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, welcome everybody. Thank you for coming and some of you are going to get a chance to recognize, especially for service that you've done and service you're going to do. We appreciate that. But the first item on the agenda is board recognition and so at this time, I'd like to ask Chuck Mattingly, Richard Duman, and Brent Hunter to come forward, please. We want to present to our incoming board members, our Civil Service Commission first, Chuck Mattingly, Assistant District Attorney, Boston County, and somebody who's served our community in other ways by serving on our Police Chief Service Committee the last couple of times, by the City Managers, appreciate that, and Richard Duman, also the servants of the Civil Service Commission. This is an important board for our city. It's a technical board and we were glad to have these two law enforcement specialists involved in our, in that commission. So thank you for your great service and we appreciate all you're going to do as you go forward for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brent.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Hey Paul, sir. Nobody likes.
All right. He says it's good. So, and then finally, we want to welcome Brent Hunter to our Museum Advisory Board and thank you. Our museum, of course, is a really charitable institution, is something that is doing, we're seeing lots of great things and we have a wonderful exhibit out there right now. So we want to thank Brent for agreeing to serve on the museum board. Thank you. And then we have a couple of folks that want to recognize for their past service on our boards, Wayne Lowery and Nellie Shandra. Nellie's here. We'll get that, we'll get this, this tribute of thanks to her. Wayne has completed his term of service on our Parks Advisory Board, but Wayne's not going anywhere. It seems like we see more now than ever, that are having that for Humanity Program. And he's doing some great things to advance Habitat for Humanity in partnership with City Parliment in our community and working on a really exciting initiative about our veterans and a way that we can partner with the city and have it for humanity to help veterans who are in a situation of service. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a series of proclamations and the first one is the month of April of 2015 as Fair Housing Month. So we'd like to call on some of our CDBG board members, like come on up, CDBG board members here, Connie Salas, Floris, Dana Fuentes, anybody else? We kind of present two of these to, one of them is for Fair Housing Month, the other one is for Community Development Block Grant Week. So whereas the National Fair Housing Act of 1968 and Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988 prohibit discrimination in housing and declared a national policy to provide within constitutional limits for fair housing in the United States, whereas the principle of fair housing is not only natural law and national policy, but fundamental human concept and entitlement for all Americans. And whereas fair housing means that you may freely choose a place to residence without regard to your race, natural origin, religion, sex, familial status, or handicap, it is your right to be treated in an equal and non discriminatory manner. Whereas the 39th anniversary of the National Fair Housing Law during the month of April provides an opportunity for all Americans to recognize that complete success and goal of equal housing opportunity and only account of the health and cooperation of all Americans. Therefore, I Chris Poswell, Mayor of the City Parliment, hereby proclaim the month of April 2015 as Fair Housing Month in the City Parliment and ask all citizens to join in this recognition. We always want to thank CDBG board members for always reminding us of Fair Housing Month. And so this proclamation, the very end of April 6th, is National Community Development Week of the National Community Development Association to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant Program. The Community Development Block Grant Program has its primary objective as development of viable urban communities by providing decent housing, suitable living environment, and expanding economic opportunities principally for persons of low and moderate income. And whereas the City Parliment receives direct allocation from the Community Development Block Grant Program annually to provide services and resources for a wide variety of community development activities that principally benefit low and moderate income persons, including the elderly and children. And whereas in our communities and in communities throughout the nation, 39 years of Community Development Block Grant Program funding has developed a strong network of relationships among local governments, residents, businesses, and nonprofit organizations. Therefore, I Chris Poswell, Mayor of the City Parliment, hereby proclaim the week of April 6th through April 11th as Community Development Block Grant Week and support in this valued program that has made a tremendous contribution to the viability of the housing stock, infrastructure, public services, and economic vitality of our community. And I always want to thank our Community Development Block Grant Board members who work so hard. It is a difficult position to serve in, in making priority choices about how these funds should be distributed, but in all cases, you all do a superb job in putting citizens, the parliaments, the most, who need it the most, front center and making sure that you spend these dollars wisely so that you can make their lives a little better in the areas in our city that they live in. So again, I want to thank each and every one of you for your service, all the other board members. All right, thank you. And next, we have a proclamation for National Mayor of Service Recognition Day. So we've got a number of people, of course, it's senior community outreach services in staff and volunteers that I'd like to call, ask them all to come up. Cynthia Rios, volunteer supervisors. Esusa Chavez, Maria Colunga, Blanca Butler, Lydia Gomez, Maria Lopez, Yelona Nela Garza, Zoe La. No. Nela Grups. It says Nela Garza. I read it. Zoe La, we're along, we're along, and we're trying to know, and Rocha, Amaro Lopez, and Deena. For a service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges. And whereas the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as it's a cost effective strategy in the city. And whereas a barer core and senior corps participants address the most impressive challenges facing our cities' challenges, maybe paid students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families to providing health services and helping communities recover from natural disasters. And whereas national service expands the economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas a barer core and senior corps participants serve in more than 60,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic neighborhood and faith based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well being. Whereas national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve in both direct service and creating and managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas national service represents a unique public service, public and private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. Whereas national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making a intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. Therefore, be it resolved that I Chris Poswell, Mayor of the City Parliment, hereby proclaim April 7th, 2015 as National Service Recognition Day and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city and to thank those who serve in five ways to give back to their communities. So this is a great example that you all set for our communities. To demonstrate, to show every one of our city that volunteerism and service to the community is a very valuable and important thing and something that you are living examples of by all the work that you do to give back to our communities. So we want to recognize our senior corps and we thank each and every one of you for the service that you do and everything you give back to our communities. So I'm going to hand this proclamation off to whoever's right here in the building and ask you, would you like to say anything about your service, board members?
Well, I'd like to thank the City Parliment, the Commissioners, Mayor, for allowing us to provide services to the elderly who take over their handicaps. They make people do a wonderful job, very dedicated and willing to do this.
Our city is better off, is better off because of what you do. Thank you. You guys are outnumbered, you can still go down and vote. One National Library, we, who's here, is relating here, or if, if I'm wrong, it's very close, it's on the dollar. If anybody else is here, we'll do it, Library Board, whoever's there, come up. Whereas libraries create potential and possibilities within their communities, campuses and schools. Whereas libraries level the playing field for all who seek information and access to technologies. Whereas libraries continuously grow and evolve in how they provide for the needs of every member of their community. Whereas libraries and librarians open up a world of possibilities through innovative programming, jobs and resources, and power of reading. Whereas libraries support democracy and affect social change through their commitment to provide equitable access to information for all library users regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries and librarians, library workers and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. If it is resolved, I Chris Poswell, as Mayor of City Parliment, hereby proclaim the year of 2018 as National Library Week. I encourage all the residents, visit our public library, take advantage of one's library resources available. Congratulations. We appreciate so much your, your service to the library. It's a real, one of our jewels in the crown, Parliment, our beautiful library is nearby the lake and we appreciate everything that you all do to keep the services there. Great, of course.
I just want to thank the City Commissioners and thank the mayor and I want to especially thank Victor Liao who comes to lots of our meetings to see what we're doing and we invite all of y'all and encourage all of y'all. But during this National Library Week, our library staff has planned wonderful activities each night of the week and the big celebration is on Saturday, the 18th, from 4:00 to 8:00. It's going to be outside. We have, we have lots of vendors from the city that are participating. Everything will be gratis. They'll be giving food and drinks, there'll be storytelling, there'll be book reading, and our community has reached out and embraced the library because they, all the vendors are willing to come and they're donating everything. So it'll be a fun time for everybody, for our community. It's a wonderful time for you to get to see our community and we're real thankful for Joseph Muniz, our acting library director, who is, is moving the board, the library, and the direction that the board has always wanted to go for years. So we're, we're opening up the doors and we're hoping that everybody will come and enjoy our wonderful library. And we just want to thank you for all the support that you give us each and every day. Thank you so much.
Okay, next item on the agenda is item three, the City Parliment's Community Wide Trash Off Day from 8:00 a.m. to noon, under Park area by the swimming pool.
Just a quick review, review, Mayor, of the Community Wide Trash Off Day, Ashland Park. Here are some of the volunteers. We were able to pick up a total of 20.72 tons of debris that was brought by local citizens to the area. You see the MMA folks who are helping the citizens. We have got a whopping 291 tires that day. So it was, it was a very successful cleanup day and here, here are some of the volunteers that helped us to make it on the case.
All right, we want to, we want to recognize some of those who came out to volunteer and Parliment. Representative, Parliment Police Officer, Law Enforcement Association, Yola, and House Nalbuna, I was going to come up here.
I'm going to take the police officer. You couldn't make it work in a patrol.
And we have one young lady from the Harlingen School of Health Professions, Savannah Mendoza. Savannah here tonight. We'll get that to her and then representing the Tamayo, both the boys. Would have any of those, those young men here with us tonight? All right, we'll get those certificates to them and then we have another big group of military candy. I don't see anybody here from the academy tonight, but we'll get them. So, all right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular meetings of March the 4th and March the 18th, 2015. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing that, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item five is a public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow a dance reception hall where alcohol is permitted in a general GR district located at 1514 South 77 Sunshine Strip, Suite 11A, bearing legal description on lot 2, block A, Treasure Hills Plaza Shopping Center. The applicant is Feliciano Drake.
Union Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow dance reception hall and event center of an existing 8,000 square foot suite that's located in the Treasure Hills Plaza Shopping Center. This is a subject property, as you can see, it's located on South 77 Sunshine Strip. This is the Treasure Hills Plaza. The subject suite would be on the southeast corner of this plaza, which would be in this general area here. As you can see, the plaza has sufficient parking for the proposed request. This is the proposed suite, which would generally be from this location all the way to the edge of this column here. Generally, the hours of operation would be from Monday through Sunday, from 8:00 a.m. through 12:00 midnight. Request was reviewed by the building, fire, health, and police department and staff received no objections to the request. We did notify the property owners within the 200 foot radius and received no objections. Public hearing was also conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission, staff and P&amp;Z Commission are recommending approval subject to the applicant, providing and maintaining the required parking, obtaining the proper permits, and complying with the required ordinances from the appropriate city departments. Take any questions and the applicant is also present for questions.
Item five is a public hearing, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak for or against this specific use permit? Hearing that, I'll close the public hearing and go to item B, which is to consider and take action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit for the above mentioned location. I ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance demanding the zoning ordinance number 7-27 of City Parliment to issue a specific use permit to Feliciano Drake to allow dance reception hall where alcohol is permitted in a general retail district located at 1514 South 77 Sunshine Strip, Suite 11A, bearing legal description on lot 2, block A, Treasure Hills Plaza Shopping Center, subdivision 721, obtaining and maintaining the proper state permits, 2, providing and maintaining the required parking in accordance with city regulations, 3, complying with the requirements administered by planning and zoning, building inspections, environmental health, fire prevention, and police departments, providing for publication, and attaining other matters related and foregoing.
Sir, a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item six is a public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for the renewal of a specific use permit to allow a bar lounge in the general retail district located at 640 North Ed Carey Drive, bearing a legal description on lot 4, block 1, Harlingen South 77, Division Unit 2. The applicant, Justin Cameron.
Mayor Commissioners, this is a renewal of the existing specific use permit that was issued back in September, approved by this commission back in September of 2014. The applicant is coming back for renewal. See, the property is located on Ed Carey Drive. This is a subject building known as Hot Shots Bar. The applicant is proposing continue the same operating hours, which would be Monday through Sunday from 3:30 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. Request was reviewed by the building, fire, health, and police departments. Building, fire, health reported no objections to the request. The police department did note that there's three out of the nine surveillance cameras that were not operable and the applicant had to repair those cameras. Did speak with the applicant today and he did indicate that he did purchase those three new cameras and is waiting to have those installed. He is here present to acknowledge that. We did have a public hearing before the P&amp;Z Commission and property owners within a 200 foot, right, 2, excuse me, 200 foot radius of this property were notified and staff received no objection to the request. Staff at P&amp;Z Commission are recommending approval subject to the applicant, maintaining the required parking, maintaining his proper permits, making sure that the surveillance cameras are repaired in an operable form, as well as providing the required licensed security guard and complying with the requirements of the appropriate city departments. Take any questions and the applicant is also present for questions.
Do we know how long those three cameras were in operable?
That I don't know, that's what I don't.
I guess I have a question, it's a police question.
Right.
Are cameras ever checked once, or once an establishment is open? I don't know if anybody can answer that. Yes, sir?
Yes, they are checked periodically, but at this time, I don't have the, the last time that those particular cameras were checked.
General question for these types of establishments, is there a routine calendar check?
Yes, sir, once yearly.
Once yearly.
Yes, sir.
Along the same line of questioning, do we also make a mandatory 30 day retention? Do we confirm the 30 day retention?
Yes, sir.
We do, we do confirm that. Okay, so based on when you did the inspection, three cameras not working, the 30 day retention was working?
At this time, I'm not sure on that, sir. I'd have to check.
I think it's important that we're going to put these stipulations on these. The other question was, when we, when this came before us, we had noted a very long list of calls.
Yes, sir.
And we, you gave us a two year history.
Yes, sir.
And we should have only gotten a six month history, just to determine, maybe an 18 and then a six because the, I think the real question or the hesitation was, was it better or worse? I mean, where are we with that?
Yes, sir.
We had 36 calls, didn't we, in the last 36 months?
For the last six months, I show here, correct, correct, like last six months, well, there was five offenses that were called in, but there was like 36 calls out there the last six months.
I don't recall the number of those that were bar checks, but there were a couple that were bar checks. My question is, is, you know, how much is excessive?
Right.
You know, we did this for six months because we wanted to see how it'd go and there were 30 some odd calls in six months and the cameras weren't working. So what are we proposing in terms of renewal? Is this a full renewal or is this a six month renewal or what is this?
This is what the board approves for a full renewal.
One year.
Sir, repeat.
A full renewal, a full renewal for the perpetuity.
Normally, we do a one year and then we review it, but this one, we did a six month.
This one was done in six months.
Then I have a question. The gentleman says he has the cameras. How will we know that they're installed and working properly?
We can have it all thrown out there and go and check them, sir.
In what time span?
We could have, to add them tomorrow if you requested.
Yeah, I think it would be prudent.
Yes, sir.
One thing I'd like to add to that, I think it's, it was an important consideration when we, as a commission, made the decision to make that stipulation. And I know I really supported that because that would help the police department in the event there was an incident out there. From an evidentiary standpoint, you'd have some video. So it'd be more for Carlos, for you and staff to make sure that if we have that on, on the books as far as a requirement, that that information should be included in the recommendation by staff. There's other things that staff looks at, right? When they make the recommendation for approval of an SUP. If we have it in there, I think we should have some system that's uniform. It's not just to pick on this one particular applicant, but for every applicant, every SUP where we have that requirement, we should have a system in place that is not just arbitrary, but it's a system where you know that you check and it's every year that that's documented and that would be included in the review and the recommendation for the approval. That way, there's no question and there's no perception of either favoritism or the fact that we have something on the books, we don't actually mean it, you know, we don't enforce it.
Yeah, one thing I, every time we've had one of these, I always keep asking the same question, just checking the cameras and is that retention? I think it's important for them to put these in there, that we actually have something in place.
Yes, sir.
To do that, and then you come back and report the three cameras out in six months. That's very concerning to me, not from the applicant standpoint, from our standpoint.
I mean, the idea behind the, the six month deal was, you know, let's see how it goes and show us some improvement. And, you know, 36 calls, nine cases were reported and included in the attached report of the nine cases, seven arrests were made and included four public intoxications, one warrant service, and two assaults. one warrant service, and two assaults. You know, I don't know whether Chili's and Applebee's have that same record. They're not, they serve food and may be different, but I mean, we seem to have some, a little bit of a pattern here, and we gave them a six-month deal to try to, you know, fix that. And we got three cameras out and continued with thirty-six calls, and so, once we give them this, you know, approval today, they don't have to ever come back again. To me, it would seem prudent to do six more months and see if we can't get the cameras working, and when we go back and check in six months, if the cameras aren't all working, then maybe the deal's over. Because this was kind of a probationary period is the way I looked at it, and I don't know that that's a great record for being on probation about, because a proprietor, it seems to me, has some responsibility to either refuse service to patrons that are intoxicated or try to call the police maybe before there is an assault, if it looks like they've got two guys that are about to get into it, you know, there needs to be some proactive stuff. Well, I'm not picking on this one applicant, but I'm just saying, when we come in and we do a six-month extension to see how it's going to go, I don't know that we got an A+ on the report card here. I mean, I don't know how staff feels about that or the police department.
Well, yeah, what, you know, I think what's bothering everybody is, we need to feel like we need to, it seems to us like there needs to be some standard here on how much is too much. Because if they're, you know, if in six months, well, over two years, a hundred eighty-nine calls, and over six months, you have thirty-six calls, every time, or every time you have a bar check, or every time you have a call, that means that, you know, patrolmen's getting pulled off of what you're supposed to be doing, right?
Correct.
I mean, you're pulling resources away from the rest of the community just to service, you know, just to keep the peace at this one place. And so that's, I think, what's really bothering everybody, and at some point, we need to say, that's too many, and you can't, you know, we don't, we don't want to renew this permit if it's going to continue to be a drain on our precious resources, you know, they can go someplace else and conduct that kind of activity not in our city, so we need to have a public hearing on this, and then the commission can decide what they want to do about the ordinance. Well, after the public hearings, or anyone who would like to speak for or against this specific use permit?
I would like to speak.
Well, come to the podium, state, you know what you should do, state your name and your residence address.
Yolanda Shaw, it, two eighty-something, uh, Atas, uh...
What is your residence address, ma'am?
Atas Palmas, two eighty-five Atas Palmas. Uh, you know what? I don't understand the city of Harlingen. These people have a business, and there's other businesses probably doing the same thing and breaking. The police is there to serve and to protect our community, okay? And these people, the cameras didn't work, are we trying to ask them out of town? Are we trying to say that these people are breaking the law when other people are breaking the law? Let me tell you what I, the other day, I was at the Valle Vista Mall, and do you know that they do not have security out there? Our police officers are wasting their time at Sun Valley Mall when they can be taking care of the community. The other, they're closed, but if somebody breaks into Sun Valley Mall, the police are out there to protect and to serve. Now, these people, if you call the police, you are punished. This is basically what it is. You're punishing the community for calling the police, because something may or may not happen. You can't take the law into your own hands, start getting the gun, or start getting the knife, and start stabbing people there. You've got to give people a chance. You're running everybody out of town. This is wrong. You give these people permission and give them another chance, and if you're punishing them because they're calling the police, that's what it's for. But yet, if you call the Sun Valley Mall or the Valle Vista Mall, that's a waste of taxpayers' money. He's got money, let him pay his own security. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak for or against this specific use permit?
I know. My name is Justin Camerlin, I'm the owner of Hot Shots Bar.
Can you state your residence address?
Six forty North Ed Carey Drive.
State your residence address.
No, my residence is two eight zero five seven Hatch Road, Real Hundred. But, that's my bar. On the stuff about the cameras, they'll be done this Saturday. I did away with the old ones, I've got sixteen brand-new coming in. They'll be up and functioning on Saturday, as well as with the DVR retention for thirty days, we can make it as long as you want. Or maybe it's about three months. As well, ongoing to those calls, sir, I did my homework this time. I pulled up some of the calls for some of the other bars.
Can you push the mic up a little bit towards you?
Okay.
There you go.
I'm sorry.
You're a tall man.
All right, there you go. As for the calls, sir, I pulled up some of the call records for some of the other bars, if you'd like to see that. Out of thirty-six calls, I checked on mine, they said about five, the rest are, I mean, business checks, traffic stops, motor assist. Unfortunately, they go up against me, I don't know why. I understand as a police officer, you call up where your station, say you pull somebody over right at the Whataburger, you don't know the address there, you use six forty North Ed Carey Drive, and put it into the system, it says Hot Shots Lounge, somewhere around that vicinity. Those, excuse me, those shouldn't be directly inquiring with me. As the other ones, the record that I pulled up, I see about five of them, I don't see any assaults, I didn't get those records. But thirty-six calls compared to some of the other ones that have way over mine, and that's just in a six-month period, I pulled the six-month records from those bars up until then. I don't know if you want to see them, or...
Do we?
Well, I just got one copy right here of the calls that are in question.
I'm not sure, what do you, I'm not sure what?
Oh, the call logs. The call logs, you say I have thirty-six calls? I pulled up several of the bars on here where they have a range of calls worse than mine.
You want to read those to us?
Well, I really don't want to call out any of the bars' names, that's the thing. I don't want to be biased on anybody.
Okay, well, let's see if there's anyone else who'd like to speak for or against the ordinance.
Thank you.
Okay. Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing, and then go on to item B, which is to consider and take action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit for the above-mentioned location. And I'd like to ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance number seven dash twenty-seven of the City Harlingen to issue a specific use permit to Justin Camerlin Bullard to allow a bar lounge in a general retail district located at six forty North Ed Carey, bearing a legal description of Lot Four, Block One, Harlingen, South Point, Subdivision Unit Two, Subject One, Maintaining Existing Off-Street Parking Spaces, Two, Maintaining the Proper State and TABC Permits, Three, Must Repair the Non-Operable Cameras and Maintain Video Surveillance on All Entrances and Exits, and Maintain a Thirty-Day Retention of the Video, Four, Continue to Provide Adequate Lighting on the Premises, Five, Continue to Provide a Licensed Security Guard in the Parking Lot During Peak Hours of Operation on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from 9:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m., Six, Comply With Requirements Administered by the Planning, Building, Health, Fire, and Police Departments, Providing for Publication or Ordaining Other Matters for Foregoing.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading, or is there a motion to adopt the ordinance with amendments on first reading?
Thank you, I want you to approve this bar and give it another chance, six months, and fix those cameras, and see what happens.
And I don't know what can be done about the calls that are attributed to your bar, and I understand what you're talking about. I mean, you're sort of getting the brunt here of us having to deal with these SUPs where we come in and the requirement is for cameras and retention, and there seems to be a problem there. I don't know exactly how we're going to address that, but we have somebody check, you know, at the time you do it, and then there's no follow-up check. It's a requirement, but there's no department in the city that's responsible for following up or doing a spot check to make sure that those cameras and that retention is there. And we may need to address that in another way, but again, this situation was, is that you knew, you had a six-month permit, and you knew they were going to come back and inspect you, and when they went back, you know, you've got three cameras that are inoperable. Now, for all I know, you only need ten, and not sixteen, or whatever you've got, so... But when they come out there and they find broken things that aren't functioning, and you're supposed to be doing it, that's the issue, I guess, and so, I'd be inclined to go along with, let's do this for six more months and see if we can't see some improvement. And you need to be vigilant, I guess, and maybe working with the police department, and if somebody's drunk at Whataburger, don't let them put down six forty North Ed Carey Drive.
I do have one concern. Oh, well, does it cost the business owner anything to come to these, I mean, is he having to pay an applicant fee or anything like that?
The applicant fee would be $250 unless you waive the fee for the next...
I would say that we should waive the fee. I don't want to pick on you, I think my real point, I think all of our points is, we as a city need to do a better job at monitoring what we establish here. I don't want to be punitive here in any way or form, and so, let's waive the fee.
Where'd the next SUP not be, correct?
Yes. The answer is yes.
Okay. And so that's...
So is that two amendments?
Well, I think Commissioner Sanchez made the motion to adopt the ordinance with amendment of it only lasting six months.
Right.
It's a six-month SUP, so he made that motion out. Commissioner Allen would like to amend it. He's made a motion to amend it further, to say that the next application will be, will waive the application fee, and you'll accept that amendment?
Yeah.
You waive the fee and save him some money.
Right.
And we need a second to the motion to amend, I think.
Second, or he can withdraw his amendment and restate it with the...
And just...
Yeah.
Two seconds. So now we have a motion to adopt the ordinance with the amendment, and the motion to second the amendment to amend it, to waive the $250 fee. Is there any discussion?
Just one more point, I think that's, a couple of things I think we know that staff needs to follow up on, and I know from a police department standpoint, you know, familiar with some of these reports that are done in the studies, one of the things that we have to do is, is sort of separate, because, and it's very true, I mean, when an officer checks out at a location, a lot of times, for the system itself, they just identify it with a particular address. I saw some of the reports that are associated with this particular SUP that they were traffic stops that occurred there, but they were tagged towards that bar. So, in fairness to not just this applicant, but every applicant, we just need to make sure that when staff does that report, that they're able to actually do a good, comprehensive study of that, so we can separate what's actually attributed to that establishment, so that we don't have varied interpretations of that information at this side. So I think it'll be helpful, not just for this one, but for any future ones. That might necessarily be a condition for this action here, but it's just an observation for staff, just to make sure that we follow up on that for future SUPs.
Yeah, well, now, that's a good, but that's a good point, and I think the recurring issue, I think, that the commission has with these is that we don't, see, that maybe PD needs to really be more reassuring to us if this is an acceptable number of calls or it's not. I mean, this is, you know, obviously, there's going to be, there's going to be potential for calls at establishments like this, but we need to know, we need to have a feel for whether or not this is out of the ordinary, and, because we don't have to give them an SUP. All right, so we have, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item seven, is a public hearing to consider and take action on an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow a bar lounge in a general GR retail district located at 204 West Jackson, bearing a legal description, Lots thirteen through sixteen, Block Forty-Five, Harlingen, Original Townside. Applicants, Luis Betancourt.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow a bar lounge, in this case, a wine bar, out of a 3,200 square foot building that's located on the Jackson and A Street. This is a subject property, and this is a photo of the subject building. The building, I'd say, is over 3,200 square feet. The proposed name of the business would be Carlito's Wine House. The hours of operation would be Monday through Wednesday from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and then Thursdays from 12:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., and then Fridays and Saturdays from 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 midnight, and Sundays from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. The building, fire, and health, and police department reviewed the request, and staff received no objection to the request. The property owners in the two-hundred-foot radius also were notified, and staff received no objections to the request. The downtown board also approved the SUP for the wine bar. Staff at P&amp;Z are recommending approvals, subject to the bar being limited to one year. The applicant also have to provide a licensed security guard during peak hours of operation, surveillance video inside and outside the building with a thirty-day retention of the video, appropriate lighting on the premises, as well as maintaining his proper permits and complying with the requirements of the building, fire, health, and police departments. Take any questions, and the applicant is also present for questions.
Yes, just to reiterate, because of our last item up here, cameras will be installed.
Correct, they will.
Okay, we need to conduct a public hearing, so all of the public hearings, anyone who would like to speak for or against this SUP? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing, and consider and take action to approve an ordinance on first reading for this specific use permit for the above-mentioned location. I ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance number seven dash twenty-seven of the City Harlingen to issue a specific use permit to Luis C. Betancourt to allow a bar lounge in a general retail district located at 204 West Jackson, bearing a legal description of Lots thirteen through sixteen, Block Forty-Five, Harlingen, Original Townside. Subject to one, the specific use permit would be limited to one year, and the applicant would be required to reapply for renewal. Two, obtain and maintain proper state and TABC permits. Provides, three, provide surveillance video and maintain a thirty-day retention of the video. Four, provide adequate lighting of the premises. Five, provide a licensed security guard during peak hours. And six, comply with requirements administered by the planning, building inspections, fire prevention, and police departments, prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, providing for publication or ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
So, the mayor.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item eight, consider and take action to appoint Deanna Vargas as the local registrar of the City of Harlingen.
Mayor Commissioners, this action is needed to appoint a new local registrar. Deanna Vargas is recommended for the position.
Does anybody know this young lady?
You know, she's done a great job, and we're certainly thankful for what she's done. We're sad to see her go, but we understand that it's a better position for her. Thank you for your job.
You want to give a speech?
And I know that she's used to work before with them.
Yes.
We're going to miss her here in City Hall. She's always, you know, smile on her face, and cheerful, and always kind of, you know, can take a punch, not from us, but from the public sometimes, you know, she's great at customer service, and we're really proud that she's going to stay on our team and take on this new responsibility for the City of Harlingen, so, assuming they all agree to this, we want to congratulate you, but I'll let them make a motion in the second...
We don't agree she gets to stay, right?
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Deanna, thank you. All right. Good luck, we know you'll do a great job over there for us.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Item nine, board appointments. All right. Item ten, citizen communication? All right. Then we're adjourned, I want to wish everybody here a happy Easter, have a wonderful, joyous Easter weekend.